I see that we are recording. I see all of our council members are in attendance. So I will call our council meeting to order. Karen, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Gerard.
Here.
Councilmember Husnick.
Here.
Councilmember Munson.
Here.
Councilmember Beistrum.
Here.
Mayor Bain.
Here. Next item on our agenda this evening is a pledge of allegiance. Invite invite everyone to join us for the pledge. If you'd like to shut off your video, Dan will put up the flag and we'll reset the pledge.
A pledge allegiance to the flag.
Of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. That might have been our worst. We will move on. We will get this. Council, you have for you an agenda for this evening. I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda. Some more.
A second.
As a motion and a second, Karen, could we have a roll call vote for the agenda, please?
Councilmember Gerard.
Aye.
Councilmember Husnick.
Aye.
Councilmember Munson.
Aye.
Councilmember Beistrum.
Aye.
Mayor Bain.
Aye. Agenda is approved. Next item on our agenda this evening is our open forum. Open forum is residents time to address council. A quick reminder that council typically does not engage in conversation, but many times will ask staff to reach out to residents to address any concerns that may they may have. I believe we've got a resident who would like to address council this evening. Is that correct?
Yes, it is. So I'm going to move them here. The resident is Don Katuski.
Welcome, Mr. Katuski.
Good evening. Can you hear me well?
Good evening. We hear you loud and clear. Welcome.
Okay, I'll just read read the letter that I wrote and thank you. We received a letter attached after January 20th. We were, we are currently in the process of constructing a beautiful home in an 8374 North Shore Trail. Something that will yield public, the neighborhood upon completion. Our understanding of the city code is that semi trailers, does semi trailer does not fall in the category of a storage container, interior or otherwise. The ordinance that applies to storage containers outlines the use of these containers on a permanent basis throughout the city. Motor homes and travel trailers are stored on residential lots. Additionally, the trailer stated between the property and the lake were not ours and they were not on our property. Furthermore, these were dock sections on wheels and the owner removed these last fall. Please update your records to show that this issue has been resolved. A perjury view of multiple properties on North Shore Trail and throughout the city appear to be the subject of the same violations we are accused of. After the letter was sent, we actively tried to contact officials in charge, namely Donovan Hart, only received no response until after the August 3rd had lapsed. When Mr. Hart eventually responded, he threatened criminal misdemeanor citation. I do not believe this is an appropriate response for our queries requesting a beneficial solution. Like we mentioned, this is an active construction site for the betterment of us and the neighboring area. We want the trailer gone as much as anyone. Hardship and further delays serve nobody's interest, especially given the hardships associated with unemployment shortage, set contractors, and a full health. We have hard time comprehending what is an issue. If there is anyone exerting undue influence in this matter, and if they have been complaints registered, we demand our legal right to know who is leveling. Besides economic hardships and uncertainty, we have faced medical issues. Well, my wife broke her two bones in her lower leg, just above the ankle this winter, so it's slipping on ice. We are tackling this, we are tackling this daunting task, the construction, reconstruction of the home as a family, my two sons, my wife, daughter-in-law, and son, one son's girlfriend are helping me with this project. We're currently approximately two thirds done siding. Once we have the exterior buttoned up, we will inside be ready and pour the floors, then we can hang with garage door and secure the house for storage. We are anxious to accomplish this so we can stop paying for the truck and get it off the lot. This is not time to level question, question the ordinances of police, the Lewis apparent infractions and long North Shore Trail and throughout the city. During the construction, we have been renting houses and renting semi, semi trailer mining for about $45,000 in expenses. These are expenses we are pursuing and attempting to eliminate with the construction of the house. As soon as the basement floor is poured, we can back up the residence this fall, and the summer trailer will be moved as adequate storage will be available. What we are proposing is a workable solution, one which we hope is accepted. Otherwise, we will pursue the legal representation. We have been working diligently over many hours towards the completion of our home. Any casual observer can see the progress being made. Simply moving the trailer is not an option as it would would have to be completely empty and repacked to ensure against breakage. We request the construction be allowed to continue unobstructed, and we have been working daily to accomplish a plan that has been in the works for over 30 years. We kindly ask you to respect our property and homeowner rights and citizens of the cities since 1984. One thing that I have a problem, I don't understand why this should be such an adversarial situation. I don't really understand what harm is being done. The trailer is not impeding traffic. It's it's just there and we will get it out of the way as soon as we can. We're constructing the house, doing a great deal of the work ourselves and for financial reasons. So I would like this mandate or whatever to be reconsidered, if we should very much.
Thank you. Thank you for being here, Mr. Katuski. I believe your message tonight was also in email form. And so Karen, if I could ask you to forward that on to council members so that they have the details. And then I guess I would encourage, I would encourage Mr. Katuski to continue to work with city staff on understanding our current ordinances and what a workable solution might look like. Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Okay. Karen, were there any other submissions for open forum this evening?
There is not.
Okay. Council, our next agenda item this evening is our consent agenda. We do have items 6A through 6O on the consent agenda this evening. I will entertain a motion to approve or any changes.
And Mayor.
Councilmember Gerard.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda. Items A through F, H through J, and L through O, and so basically pulling G and K for discussion, please.
There is a motion. Is there a second on that motion or any other changes?
I'll second it.
A motion and a second. Karen, could we have a roll call vote on the motion?
Councilmember Gerard.
Aye.
Councilmember Husnick.
Aye.
Councilmember Munson.
Aye.
Councilmember Beistrum.
Aye.
Mayor Bain.
Aye. Consent agenda items approved and moved to the regular agenda. And first up is item 6G, which is the lighthouse loss letter of credit reduction number six. Councilmember Gerard.
Actually, both 6G and K are the same. This is the questions for Ellie for city engineer Ryan Goodman. Typically, when we get an approval to do a letter of credit reduction or contractor request for payment, it usually states that we want to, we recommend that a council approve the reduction. In this case, and both of these, it was requested that we consider to reduce and not recommend to reduce. I'm just wondering if there if it's just a different way of doing it. They were involved in the reports. I'm just a little uncertain if something different was supposed to happen.
Councilmember Gerard, I'll jump in on this. Sometimes in the past, we've had quite the discussion on some site improvements related to letter of credits on something that you guys might hear that I don't know that when it comes for an approval and reduction of the sites, it could be just a neighbor dispute to going on or something like that. This gives you guys the opportunity to go through the process. Whether you have questions, just like you do here or not. So it's really a recommendation or request, same thing in my view in this circumstance. It's not a final acceptance of the project as they still have some site work to finish on their private site improvements, but all the public improvements now have been completed and approved by the city and the watershed district.
Thank you, Ryan. So you consider this one and the same regardless of how you requested it?
Yep, correct.
But it but it is your intent, Ryan, to raise this to council's consideration and just make sure that give us an opportunity to ask any questions?
Yeah, it's just one one other step that I've always done that just provides transparency on these projects. Sometimes they provide your only updates you guys might see. In getting all the questions from the public on the backside that I don't know about, or just, you know, open discussion about a site if, you know, there's issues or concerns. So it's just, you know, a document we prepare to just show the transparency of when we go through these reductions and the data behind it on what we're doing and why and what we're holding still and why. And, you know, just again, just another opportunity for you guys as elected officials to deal with any questions or concerns on some of these improvements, you know, especially when, you know, when we did have Second Avenue torn up, there were a lot of questions going on. So that just provided, you know, some update for you guys to have something physically to look at.
Thank you for that clarification. And I guess with that, I would suggest maybe we address these individually. And so first first would be 6K, the lighthouse loss letter of credit reduction number six. Council, any further questions, concerns specific to that letter of credit reduction?
Is this, this is G, not K? G?
I'm sorry, 6G, yeah.
I guess just I'm a little bit confused here. Are we comfortable where we are with this project? I mean, knowing the issues that we've had, kind of the ongoing issues that we've had, are we are we comfortable? And I'm assuming, Ryan, you wouldn't have brought this forward if if we weren't, but I just am, I'm a little unclear on the differentiation here.
I brought you forward a reduction for the work they've completed and has been accepted.
Okay.
The remaining letter of credit is to cover work that hasn't been completed. But it so happens to be on their site. They have not done the landscaping on the west side of the parking lot. That's in their approved plan of the conditions of approval of the project. And then on the north side, the driveway to Rube's Tire, which they had curb and gutter in, it was obviously put in at the wrong elevation. So they removed it and asked if they could just make it all blacktop. And we said, that's fine, because, you know, there might be redevelopment to Rube's to the north, but they left it gravel. So those are the two things that's still being withheld on the private site. Other than that, all the other stuff is done and been and signed off on.
Okay.
We're not going to hold, you know, money, you know, this gets into a touchy situation. So you got to have, you can't hold money for stuff that's already been done and accepted.
Yeah, I that's why that's why I wasn't quite sure where this was going. I just I needed that clarification that, you know, I we I feel confident voting that the 5,750 is the cost of the remaining work.
Is there a motion to approve?
A motion to approve item 6G, lighthouse loss letter of credit reduction number six.
A second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion on this item? Being done, Karen, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Gerard.
Aye.
Councilmember Husnick.
Aye.
Councilmember Munson.
Aye.
Councilmember Beistrum.
Aye.
Mayor Bain.
Aye. Motion approved. Our next item is item 6K, which is the third Lake Estates, Third Lake Estates, letter of credit reduction number three. Councilmember Gerard already explained his thought process on polling. Ryan has clarified. I guess, council, I would ask if there are any other questions specific to this letter of credit reduction.
Mayor Bain, I do have a question on this one. So, and I might just repeating what councilmember Beistrum just asked you, Ryan, but I just want to double check because I receive a lot of emails about this project. Full transparency, I live by this project. So this is just approving the work that has been done that you have, we have accepted. It is not approving for the work that hasn't been done. I've received numerous emails about the erosion and dust control, which there was chemical laid down, and I'm curious if there are guidelines around that, who can do that?
Two questions there, Ryan. You want to tackle those?
Mayor City Council, so on the second page of my memo, there's a breakdown of costs.
Okay.
The stuff that you see in red is what I've changed from the last letter of credit. The stuff that's still in bold, black is unchanged because they haven't done the work yet. Now, each time that we go through a letter of credit reduction process, we go through a formal estimate of what we think if we had to walk in tomorrow to go finish the project. However, on this job, because they're accessing a portion of the development through a gravel road that part of the plot requirements that require them to pave the gravel road. We said before we entertained another letter of credit reduction because of all the complaints the city staff was receiving, you have to do something to address the dust issue on 224th. The developer has applied two applications of dust control, calcium chloride. And then you can also see that I've added a line item to this current letter of credit to account for future dust control applications that are going to get us, you know, up to a point. Is it Donovan is the development agreement, off your memory, 2022 or 23, require the workhorse paving or 70% build out, whatever one comes first. And then at that point, then Pacey, the developer is going to be done. And then this is going to be coming back, follow on the building permit requirements on future, you know, house construction. But so we've made the developer do something to deal with the complaints, and then we have accounted for a future cost in here, as you can see in number four, with erosion control slash dust control.
Okay. Thank you for explaining that.
Any other questions on this item this evening? If not, I will entertain a motion to approve.
And Mayor, make a motion to approve item 6K of the consent agenda for Third Lake Estates, letter of credit reduction number three.
A second.
With the motion and a second, any further discussion on this item? I will just say thanks, Ryan, for being responsive to some of the resident concerns we've had and working that into the letter of credit accordingly. So much appreciated. Karen, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Gerard.
Aye.
Councilmember Husnick.
Aye.
Councilmember Munson.
Aye.
Councilmember Beistrum.
Aye.
Mayor Bain.
Aye. Motion approved. Moving on to our regular agenda item this evening, our first item is item 7A, resolution 08242001, headwaters 123, comprehensive plan amendment. And Donovan, you are going to walk us through this.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Members of council, I'd like to present the, it's something of a dual application. It's both for a comprehensive plan amendment with the resolution that the mayor just mentioned, as well as the ordinance 697, which is a zoning map amendment. These pertain to the same property. This is a property that council has some familiarity with, both through the July 20th Joint EDA Council and Plan Commission workshop where we discussed these applications and the city desired to alter this current zoning and future land use for this property to to further city economic development goals. And also, I'm sure you're aware of it through the EDA work that's been going on for almost two years now regarding preparing this this site for the tech quarter initiative. Of course, that's being quarterbacked by Dan with the EDA. And I'd like to make my presentation somewhat short, since you do have familiarity with this. And then allow it for the questions so we can target any concerns or questions you have, as well as I want to remind you that both of these motions, if council chooses to make motions for both the the comprehensive plan amendment, as well as the the ordinance change require super majorities, that is a four vote out of five, since that's when the Met Council requires for the comprehensive plan amendment applications. As well as for any property that's being rezoned from residential to commercial, our zoning code requires that super majority in this, or two thirds majority, which in this case is four votes. So I'd like to present the, share my screen and show you some of the basic information around this. As you can see, the outline in blue here is the headwaters 123 property, city-owned, 123 acres. That's headwaters Parkway in the north, the highway 61 on the east there. Currently, the the zoning map, I'm sorry, the future land use map looks like this. This is from the 2040 future land use plan, where the property is a mixture of mixed use, which is that diagonal red and yellow shaded portion, approximately 90 acres. And then this medium, low to medium density residential property, about 33 acres on the south here. And this is Tannishbrook, of course, to give you a little more orientation there. So that's a future land use plan. And this is what involves with the comprehensive plan amendment to shift that from the this mixed use and this residential future land use categories to business park. And you can see a little bit of the business park. It's gray on the far side of highway 61 there. So the what staff is asking council to approve, and this was recommended unanimously unanimously by the planning commission for approval, is to basically turn this, headwaters 123 into that gray color, which is the business park. And that would allow the type of uses that are envisioned in the tech quarter initiative, as well as other job centers with the overarching desire to have a something of a replacement for the the job center that the city probably or may probably, well, we'll see, may or may not get in that southwest corner where the the comp plan did envision a interstate interchange. And but that's to be determined whether that will come. But this is something the city is shifting to in response to some RFIs. That's request for information for properties, as well as at least one serious data center interest in this property. And this is also in your your staff packet. You saw some of the the presentations given by Chris Eng from the Washington County CDA. Bruce, help me out, Dan, from Great River Energy, Bruce Saylor, I believe.
Bruce Saylor.
Yes, and Dan Peterson, who is the CBRE broker for this property. So I think, and it was, this was a subject of multiple conversations with the planning commission. And of course, that workshop that you also participated in. And I think it was actually a great opportunity to really show and collect a lot of information that, you know, the staff and different representatives have advocates or of the parcels have pulled together. So that's just, that's the comprehensive plan amendment piece. That's the resolution. And then the for council to consider. And then next is contingent on a comprehensive plan amendment being approved by the, of course, the resolution approved by council, but then, of course, the council comprehensive plan amendment approved is a zoning map amendment. This is the subject of the ordinance. And this relates to rezoning the headbars 123 property in Tan here. Shaded, the shaded piece means the plan unit development, that's from headwaters, and the the proposed zoning map amendment changes all this to business park zoning district, which is different than business park future land use category. And also removes that that headbars PD piece of it, which mostly deals with residential, so it's not applicable as it as a as a business park. And with that, I'd be happy to take any questions from the city council.
Thank you, Donovan. And Donovan presented both both items from our agenda this evening. I'm happy to entertain questions on both items. We will take action individually, but maybe given the amount of conversation that has happened, that has occurred to date already, and previous meetings, maybe from a discussion standpoint, we could consider both. Councilmembers, any questions you may have for Donovan or staff on either the resolution or the ordinance that is before us this evening? Not seeing any questions. And Donovan, thank you for including in the packet the materials that were presented to the planning commission. I thought both the listing agent, the Minnesota Technology Quarter Team, as well as our partners at Washington County just did an excellent job, and yourself. And Dan Adam did an excellent job of just presenting what the opportunity is for the city and why we would be considering such a move. So just great job and much appreciated. Also appreciation to the planning commission and the EDA who have all put in a lot of work on getting this project to this point. So much appreciated. Any questions? Or I would entertain a motion. The first item, the first item to be considered this evening is the resolution 08242001, and that is on page 95 of your packet. And I will kick us off by motion, making a motion that we approve resolution 08242001.
A second.
I'll second.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on that item? Not seeing any discussion. Karen, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Council member Gerard.
Hi.
Council member Hesnick.
Hi.
Council member Munson.
Hi.
Council member Beistrum.
Hi.
Mayor Bain.
Hi, motion approved. Next item on the agenda is the related item, which is the ordinance number six ninety-six, the amendment to the business, I'm, I'm sorry, I am on the wrong ordinance. Bear with me. The ordinance six ninety-seven, an ordinance amending the city of Forest Lake official zoning map, rezoning property identified by PID numbers two nine dot zero three two dot two one dot two three dot zero 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 two and two nine dot zero three two dot two one dot two four zero 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 one, located within the headwaters development area from mixed residential, single family and townhouse district MXR one to business park CT. And that is on page ninety-seven. I motion we approve ordinance six ninety-seven.
I'll second.
Sam, can I have it? I believe I heard, I believe I heard council member Hesnick first. Any discussion on the ordinance six nine seven this evening? Not seeing any. Karen, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Council member Gerard.
Hi.
Council member Hesnick.
Hi.
Council member Munson.
Hi.
Council member Beistrum.
Hi.
Mayor Bain.
Hi, and motion approved. Moving on to our next agenda item this evening, item seven C, CARES Act expense budget approval. I believe we've got Captain Weiss and Chief Newman to walk us through this. Welcome, gentlemen. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Bain and members of council. First of all, I'd like to thank the department heads and all the employees of the city that worked tirelessly to get this list in front of us and to vet this list. And as we continue to battle COVID nineteen within the city and our businesses, as well as our staff, emergency management within the city remains well prepared. And mitigation plans that we have, they've, they've been used and they've worked well. In front of you in the packet is the CARES Act funding request that has been gone over by, by staff. It shows the CARES Act funding for the city of Forest Lake, an amount of one point five five one million dollars and eighty-six cents. And with the funding that was vetted by staff, we use an amount of four hundred and twenty-four thousand eight hundred and forty-two dollars and sixty-eight cents left over. I'm not going to go through the list exactly, but if you have any questions, I'd be willing to answer them for you.
Before we jump into additional questions, Captain and Chief Newman, could you just walk us through kind of the process that you've gone through on coming up with this list and just what, what have you, what have been some of the major considerations? Just give us a little more context.
Yeah, several months ago when this was announced, myself and Chief Newman got busy on, on creating a database that we could include all staff to make sure that we hit all corners of the city and, and both loss of revenue and expenses to battle, and also for equipment that we have used and had to purchase, or equipment that is going to be needed as we went through different events, such as the food drive at the YMC, we saw a vast need for equipment as this continues, and we don't anticipate this going away anytime soon. So to be well prepared as a city, as we've done in the past with PPE and getting on top of things, this just betters our, our, our fight against this. And having the staff as a whole involved, instead of one or two people putting this list together was vital, because there were things that, that, you know, Chief Newman and myself didn't think about in the parks department or in, you know, in the building maintenance department and things like this. So it was a team effort for sure, but it was definitely a team. All the paperwork that has been requested, all the paperwork that is requested by the state to get this funded is complete, and we've actually already submitted our, our expenses to date, which is in this inclusion as well.
Thank you. Questions, council, what questions do you have? Council member Hesnick.
There has to be some sort of an approval process, or how does that work? You know, who says yes or no when they look at your expenses that we've used so far? And, or is that kind of left up to us to do that?
Well, we, what we did to do this, in the, in the letter to the council, there's, there's different guidelines that the Treasury Department is looking for to qualify for an expense. So we took every one of these expenses, we took every expense that was asked to buy, which is not included in this list. And we vetted them. So we took each question by the Treasury Department, does it fit the audit requirements? If ten years down the road, I'll be retired and gone, but ten years down the road, five years down the road, the, the auditors come knocking, and we want to make sure. So every one of these items has a separate packet or a separate sheet vetting the item and what it's used for, and why the expense is vital to battle the COVID. So it's my understanding, and Patrick, please jump in, but it's my understanding that the council will, would approve this initial expenditure because of the sheer amount, and move forward from that point and decide at that point with council direction on what that remainder of that four hundred thousand some odd dollars will be used for. If that makes sense, council member Hesnick.
Yeah, correct. The, as, as you all know, that any monies that the city does not expend needs to be, needs to be returned to the county and then obviously to the federal government. One of the requirements of the CARE Act is to pass a budget, the council has to pass a CARES Act budget to identify where this money is going. So you're, what we're asking for tonight is, is to pass this preliminary budget so that we can get going. If things come up within the next few months that we have missed, or that we have an opportunity, we'll have to come back and ask you for an amended budget, being that this all has to be bought, built, sold, invoiced and paid by November. Actually, the first part of November. So we're on a tight time scale, schedule on all of these, these items, but if we have anything else that comes up before us that we can include, we'll try, but, you know, this is a pretty comprehensive list at this point.
Well, thanks. I just wanted to make sure that it was out there for the public to understand how this works. And so, you know, based on what I've heard so far and what I've been reading about it and everything, I'd make a motion that we approve the CARES Act expense budget that's been approved so far through our.
Just, just one item here is that I don't believe we've included, included the senior citizen, senior assistance center loss of revenue in this. So we would need to amend this. I requested you amend this prior to your adoption of this and add twenty-five thousand dollars to this total.
I, I would, I would amend my motion for that, extra twenty-five thousand. Will that help?
Question, a follow-on question. Well, actually, so there's a motion on the table. Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second.
There's a motion and a second. Other questions and discussion, and I guess a follow-on question to the addition for the senior center. There were some additional, and then maybe this is, I know there were some additional senior center items that were done to the building. I want to make sure that we incorporated those. Is that what I'm seeing under the building maintenance budget?
Building maintenance budget?
Five hundred, yeah, HVAC, UV light, senior center. Were there other things that were also done to the senior center?
I don't believe there's that much more, because they were pretty prepared for, they already had some cleaning stations. We've looked into that. If we have to make more adjustments, we will. But the twenty-five thousand, basically, we're talking about is a loss of their program revenue that they've incurred to date, because they really haven't been meeting, collecting dues, or however else they raise money, so.
Okay. An additional question, I know Public Works was, working with businesses that were setting up, and working with businesses that were setting up temporary patio spaces on some of the barricades. Have we incorporated and included those costs of those barriers in this?
Yes, they, they are included in this, in the initial expansion.
Okay. Um, a question, so there's an outstanding question from somewhat from the EDA, and also from our understanding of what Washington County is doing with their grant program. As we, so I understand that there are some municipalities that are using some of their CARES Act funding for business grants to provide some relief to businesses within their communities that have been impacted by COVID. This currently does not anticipate any sort of a funding of such a program from a Forest Lake perspective, right?
That's correct. And Dan will take this advice, misspoke speak here, but Washington County has a pretty robust business assistance program that they're offering. They also have a lot more funding than we would have. If, I think it's in the business's best interest to go to the county, because I think that's where they can get more money than we can probably offer them. You know, we still have some excess money that we could consider later on as some assistance if that's necessary, but right now we would point them to Washington County, who has the funding and expertise to, to put together a, a plan or a program that can fund these businesses. We need the help.
And just to.
Go ahead, Ben.
Just to piggyback off that, they ran their program for two weeks, so it just closed today. They closed the application period today. And they're meeting tomorrow to potentially look at doing an expansion of it. They did not hit the number of applications they were hoping to in the initial round. So there's still, they still have excess money in their initial grant pool that they have. So they're looking at either expanding the net, kind of readjusting standards. The issue that we would have is that if we do an individual program, we need to see if that business has applied to Washington County, we would need to make sure that they're not double dipping on funds. So if they're paying mortgage, rent, loss revenue, we could not use our grant program to basically give them more money towards those. They'd have to use them for additional funds. So I am working with Chris to see if they need more funds, because we could potentially just piggyback funds in the county program if need be, but right now, they're, they are sitting on some excess funds right now, but they're looking at what they're going to do with moving forward.
My, my, I hear that, and I think that there is likely a, you know, a communication and an awareness challenge of businesses not knowing about the program or not being able, you know, not, you know, it's, it's more of a, an awareness issue than a economic issue. I, you know, I, I know, I would suspect that there's, you know, with full awareness, there should be, you know, many times the demand over, you know, available funds for some of those programs. So I'm, I guess I'm surprised that they haven't been inundated with requests. But also, I guess I would, rather than off taking the four hundred thousand dollars of remaining dollars and just turning that over to the county, if we have an opportunity to piggyback on that program and do some specific expansion of dollars to Forest Lake impacted businesses, I would like to see us take advantage of that and use our allotted funds as much as we can within Forest Lake. Council, I don't know if you have thoughts on that, you know, kind of what would be the plan for those excess funds?
Mayor Bain, just to, just to, just to give council one more piece of information, the Fairview Health provider has also asked for a portion of our funding in the amount of a hundred and four thousand three hundred and seventeen dollars. We did not include that yet, because we wanted to make sure we had enough money to fund things we do. If we get further down the road towards November, we may bring this back for your consideration if it aids the, the community health provider. We just wanted to wait and see until a little later towards November that we make sure that we have any money for them and that we don't have our own needs to meet. So as this, the virus isn't done, we may run into things we don't know about yet, so we'll bring that back if we can.
Thank you for that. I guess I would, I would recommend, I guess I, I support and so appreciate the work that's been done to the preliminary budget, and I would support passing the preliminary budget tonight with instructions to staff to come back with some recommend, recommended, recommended next steps for, you know, for, what a Forest Lake, Washington County partnership for a grant program might look like. Based on number of Forest Lake applicants and just what, what does that pool look like? And then also include in that the request from Fairview and that we would consider that as a future council meeting as an amendment.
I'm, I'm intrigued by that as well. I, I reviewed the Washington County proposal and the scope felt fairly narrow to me. And I'm wondering about opportunity to maybe look at need a little more broadly. I don't know what that means. I'm not, I'm not in a position to define it right here in the moment, but I just, I just remember that was my immediate reaction in reviewing that, is that it felt very narrow in scope. So I would, I would support taking a, a little deeper look at that.
Yeah, and I, I, you know, I can appreciate an initial, you know, I can appreciate that Washington County didn't, not having been in this situation before, wasn't quite sure what to expect as far as applicants, and so putting some, maybe initially some pretty narrow parameters in so that you're able to spread you know, funding accordingly. But I got some similar feedback, council member Beistrum, from a couple of businesses on the cap on total revenue, and so the targeted businesses seem to be quite small. And again, I'd rather the, you know, the, as long as the CARES Act funding doesn't have a revenue component or a revenue limiter, I'd rather us, again, use those dollars here in Forest Lake on COVID impact rather than passing it on. If the county doesn't use it, I understand they pass it on to the state. Somebody's going to be using those funds, and I'd, I'd like us to keep, find whatever we can to keep those dollars here as much as possible. Also of interest, and I guess, Dan, I'd pass the speed, I, I just got this feedback as we were going into our EDA meeting, so I haven't had a chance to talk to you separately, but I did get some feedback from a, a Washington County mayor that they are maybe using the Washington County application as their application process, but they, they want to have a tight tie to the city and recognition for those businesses. And this is coming from the city. This isn't a Washington County program. This is part of, you know, something the city is doing to partner with you, and I, I think that messaging is important as well. I appreciate our Washington County partnership, but whatever we do, it's, those are, you know, city distribution of CARES Act dollars that are being used for that program, and I think that messaging is important. And also, it's our, you know, we have some control over parameters and what we, what we wanted that program to look like, and I, I think there's some benefit to that to the extent we can get it.
Dan, did this, did this funding, I, and I just can't quite recall, was the funding available for nonprofits as well?
You know, I'd, I'd have to double check the standards on it. I thought it was designed for, for profit entities. I'd have to confirm that. I don't know that off the top of my head.
Because I know there was some funding, CARES Act funding at, at points in time. It wasn't, it wasn't designed for nonprofits, but then it was, it, you know, they were just, they were bouncing all over the board with these parameters. But I, I know that, you know, we've got some nonprofits in the area that have really struggled through this as well that could potentially use some support. I mean, they just had to completely pivot and start doing things a different way, and, and really had some expenditure, related expenditures that you know, probably weren't in the budget. So, you know, so I'm not sure if there's an opportunity there, but just to keep those smaller nonprofits on the radar as well.
Council, other questions on this topic or comments? We have a motion to approve the amended suggested amount, and that amendment includes the additional amount for the senior center. There's a motion and a second on the table for that. Any further discussion before we vote? I guess, quick clarification, this is an approval of a preliminary budget, and then the expectation is that this gets revised as additional information becomes available between now and that final funding date in November. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. What this will really do is allow us to spend some more of the money. It's already accounting for some of the money we spent, but some of it's also, it's, it's you giving us permission to move forward on the items listed. And then we will come back with any adjustments before the end of, end of October to, to have you approve those as well.
Excellent. And then to council member Hesnick's point. Excellent. And then to Councilmember Husnick's point previously, these are dollars that are made available to us from the federal government via the CARES Act.
Correct.
With that, Karen, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Gerard.
Aye.
Councilmember Husnick.
Aye.
Councilmember Munson.
Aye.
Councilmember Beistrum.
Aye.
And Mayor Bain.
Aye. Motion's approved. Our next item on the agenda this evening is ordinance number 696, Amendment to Business Licensing Effective Date Terms. Karen, I believe you're walking us through this.
I am. So this is ordinance number 696. It is about business licensing, and this has been to council on a previous meeting. So this essentially is changing the ordinance. It's the business licensing effective dates for annual renewals. This was being changed because some of our business licensing, the effective dates were February 1st to January 31st, and others were effective at the beginning of the year through December 31st. But to make everything cohesive, this ordinance is coming forward to change all business licensing annual renewal dates from start, starting February 1st and then expiring on January 31st of the following year. This, this is good. Council has a lot of meetings. We don't, in November and December, we don't have as many meetings. This is better for finance in terms of when these applications actually come in. The majority usually come in in January, which is after the expiration date of December 31st. So this would avoid expirations for business owners. It would be a better workflow for the finance department. We don't have as many meetings towards the end of the year. It helps businesses out because they have obviously holidays and other things that they're thinking of. So, recommendation is to approve the change for the business licensing terms. Business licensing effective dates, the terms on the effective dates.
Thank you, Karen. Council, for your reference, yeah, for your reference, ordinance 696 is on page 135 of your packet. Any questions of Karen or discussion? Councilmember Gerard.
Maybe you've told us this before, Karen, but so the month of January of 2021, if these businesses that don't line up, and granted, you got the biggies, the cigarettes and the alcohol, so what, they, do they not have a license for January of 2021, and is, is that an issue in any way?
I, I think that's accounted for in the ordinance. It shouldn't be an issue. I really hate to say it. It shouldn't be an issue because the majority of those business renewals don't come in until January anyways, when they've already expired on December 31st. So I quickly try to hustle and get them through in January. And, and the good news is, all the tobacco licensing, I was very, very impressed, and I think part of it had to do with Dan fronting that whole thing and just, we're keeping everybody on board. But the tobacco licensing went beautifully last year, and everybody did what they were supposed to do. So this is kind of a way to get everybody all on the same page with those effective dates.
Thank you.
And maybe January will be, you know, nobody will expire then.
Do, to that end, do we, do we need to pass a, an additional provision that does just extend over them, rather than having everybody in an unlicensed status for that one month? Do we need to do some sort of a a separate one-time consideration to do a technical extension?
Um, I, I'm gonna defer to Amanda because she did help with the ordinance, and I don't know if it was, if that was accounted for in the ordinance. I thought that it was. There was some, there was some discussion that Amanda had, Amanda and I had back and forth in an email about the, the dates, so.
Could you repeat the, the question, Mara?
Yeah, is the, um, so does the ordinance account for and, and give essentially an extension over this month of January 2021, or are we effectively leaving everybody unlicensed for that one month? Do we need to do something separate to account for that one month? What's, what's the recommended path?
Yeah, so, Your Honor, we did talk about that back and forth and decided that for the amount of work, it wasn't, it wasn't worth putting something in the ordinance that was just going to cover a month this one time, and we were just going to move forward with the new schedule and kind of ignore January for the purpose of that. Does that make sense?
I understand what you're saying. I'm thinking if I am comfortable with that. Does, I guess, does that leave us? Does that leave us in a tenuous or a place we wouldn't want to be for that one month if we had to take enforcement action? And maybe you're saying the risk is low and it's not worth, I, worth the effort?
Yeah, it was determined that at this point we were going to leave it for this, this one month. Instead of having a bunch of language in there regarding this one month, this one time, that was basically going to create a lot of clutter in the ordinance, tried to keep it really clean moving forward. So future staff could interpret it very clearly what we were trying to do. We decided to leave it as you see it, where we, we don't address the, the January.
And, and essentially, so, and I, I guess I remind anyone who's watching this conversation or listening to this conversation, the, the, the big hitters or the areas with most risk are liquor and tobacco, and those already have the amended dates. So this really is the lower-risk license areas, pond brokers and other light massage and other areas that we've had less historical enforcement action. And so with that distinction, I guess I'm comfortable with the current approach if that's staff's recommendation.
Yeah, and part of what we had discussed was sort of the issue of how to prorate billing and charging for sort of a 12-month, you know, 13-month license versus, versus an 11-month license, and kind of all of the logistics behind the administration of that. We decided that with those other aspects, it, it was, we were gonna leave it clean, as clean as we could do.
Councilmember Husnick.
Yes.
Maybe we could just make a really simple motion to give a one-month grace period for that, one month only for January of 2021. And based on that, I'd make a motion to that effect that we accept ordinance 696, allowing for a one-month grace period to include the month of January 2021.
I'll second.
There's a motion and a second on the table. Any further discussion on this item? Seeing none, Karen, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Gerard.
Aye.
Councilmember Husnick.
Aye.
Councilmember Munson.
Aye.
Councilmember Beistrum.
Aye.
Mayor Bain.
Aye. Motion approved. Thank you for the work on that. Our next agenda item this evening, item 7E, Water Turnoff Notices for Non-Compliance. Dave, I believe you're walking us through this one.
Yep. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm, I'm here to seek approval for water shutouts for non-compliant residents. So most of you are aware that we're in the middle of a water meter replacement program. It's going extremely well. We started off with approximately 3,500 meters to be replaced. We're down to about, roughly about 400 left. So, at about 10%, 10% of the meters are left to get changed. A bunch of them are larger style meters that are already scheduled to be done. They're just still on the list. But these, these replacements have all got received for, for notices, telling the contact Ferguson Auto Works to get their, their meters replaced. There's not been response to that list that has been sent, a response to any one of the four letters. So we're here tonight seeking approval to send out certified letters via city to to actually shut their water off if you do not let us in the property. City ordinance, I believe it's 51, 5105, requires residents to give access to the city, the water meters. And these, these residents are violating city ordinance by not responding to the mail. The good part about the certified is that we'll know that they can get it. These letters that are sent out by Ferguson, we're not quite sure if they've made it to the right property owner, if they've made it to a renter, or we don't know that for sure, but these certified, they, they signed for that letter. We know that somebody either in the house or the, the owner got that letter, so we're able to confirm that somebody read that letter or got that letter mailed to them. It's pretty similar to, I believe in 1918, we came here, it was a lot smaller of a list. It was the same thing, trying to, trying to change residents' meters out. In both those cases, I think the highest one was about 20-some. None of those waters, people had their water shut off as soon as you sent them a certified letter and paint a blue dot in their front yard. They, they seemed to start complying with, with those letters, so. It's a, it's a large, large amount. The plan would be to send out about 100 at a time and then kind of stagger them and then kind of go through that process. Then, the, the list below two was as a Wednesday. There's, there's a lot that are coming in after that fourth notice. You know, telling people that they, there's a pretty good chance your wa, water will be shut off. But at this point, Ferguson doesn't have the authority to shut water off or to ask us to shut it off. It's, it's the city and, and you know, has council approval, so. Kind of at this point, it's not the desired route, but you know, substantial completion for the project has to be when we do the next water me, water meter read, and that's on, end of last week in September. And then full complete, completion has to be in, in October, so we're kind of getting close to where we have to get, get these online and, and get the new meters in, so. This is kind of, at the end where we need to get, get these last ones in.
Get these last ones in to
to make that happen, and so yeah, that's, that's approximately it, and take any questions if you have any.
Mara, I think you're on mute. I didn't hear it. I lost you someplace.
I might have a dead headset. Are you hearing me now?
Oh, I can hear you now.
All right, sorry about that. Dead headset. Council, what questions do you have of Dave?
Mara, I just have a, I just have a comment to make. Can you hear me okay? This happens, this happens to be our own experience, our own personal experience with Ferguson. We, as soon as we got the notifications, they're gonna be doing this, we applied for right away, got our house done and our hangar done right away. Just, let's get it done. Well, then I started getting letters about we weren't in compliance, and we got three, like, three notices. And, and with phone calls in between to try to get this straightened out, and so it was always, well, you gotta, we don't know, you gotta check with the water department or whatever. I'm, my only concern with, and I, is seems to me there's some issues with their bookkeeping along the way here, so the certified letters at least bring that forward, but there is some issues with their, with their bookkeeping, and it, and I know that firsthand, so I just wanted to bring that up.
There, there was an issue, maybe not an issue, but there's some lag time, and when Ferguson does the meter to when the city gets the list of ones that have been done to the time that our third-party opus inputs it in. So there, there's some, there's not, maybe not specifically yours, but there's, has been some where it's been changed out kind of right in the window of when the next mailers went out. Can't explain the three, but that's happened to a few people where it was changed, but then that, that's, that updated spreadsheet hasn't happened, but we did on Wednesday get this list of the, the 400 or so that haven't been changed out. They also sent a spreadsheet of all the meters that have been already changed, and Becky in the utilities department is cross-referencing all of them to make sure they're not on both lists, or there's ones on the change-out list that shouldn't be on there, or ones on the changed-out ones that really haven't been changed out, so we're, we've kind of been going through that to make sure you know, the ones on that final list that'll get the letters are indeed, you know, still haven't had that meter changed.
Thank you, Dave. Other questions of Dave? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion to approve.
All right, I'll, I'll make a motion that we approve the water turnoff non-compliance system, or whatever you want to call it, that we're gonna go through by mailing out the letters and then going from there, so.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? I guess any, I, I know that we have, you know, part of our contract was to rely on Ferguson for those, and those notifications. If it's appropriate for us to do some additional city communications as a last-ditch effort prior to sending off the shut-off notices, including it in the weekly email blast, social media posts, if that's appropriate, if we're at the spot where we're ready to have some citywide notification, I think is helpful. If nothing else, just to take the sting off of the water turnoff notice, it certainly gets attention, but it's not the best experience, and I get it, they've already gotten four notices, but a lot of people just don't get their mail anymore, and so it's part of the situation we're in, so. I fully support this, and I, and I know Ferguson has done a lot of work on notifications, and that's part of the communication we have, and, but whatever we can do to kind of take the sting away from the water turnoff notice is helpful.
Mayor Bain.
Any other discussion?
I'm just noticing a lot of duplications on this list, Dave, as I'm reviewing it right now. I glanced at it before and thought, wow, this is a really long list, but now that I'm looking at it, I'm noting a lot of duplications. Is there a reason why there would be duplications on, on this list?
A, a lot of it, I think, is the redacted part. I don't know if you're seeing the the real one or the ones with the names on it. So a lot of them are people who own multiple houses that have separate meters in different buildings, or there's apartments, there's a bunch of them that are owned by one person, but every meter is separate, so that's how it duplicates, so, so if you'd see all the stuff that was blacked out, it shows property owner plus residence plus, plus all that, so it's, you'll see a lot of multiples where there's the same, the same name, but really, it's the, the meter number, that, that final column that has the account numbers, the one that, you know, they're all, they're all different. The ones that start, the ones that start with a seven.
Yeah, and that's what I'm, that's what I'm meaning. I mean, I, because I can't, the, the names are blacked out, and they should be, but I'm looking at addresses and then kind of cross-checking over to the, to the meter number, and I'm seeing duplicate meter numbers on here, too, so.
So that may be where there is an account that's tied in with some person's paying the same, same account on multiples. If you saw the full spreadsheet, it makes a lot more sense that there, there is, there's not, there's not duplicates that way. It's, it's duplicates either between properties or account numbers or, or certain owner, so there might be an owner that has multiple properties, but it's, it's all coded, coded different. That's what makes it tricky about the initial mailer. Some person may get 40 letters, you know, so it's, it's kind of a weird way to, to page through which ones am I getting done and which ones I'm not, so. Sometimes those residents have just waited till they got the next notice or the fourth notice to realize which ones they have not done.
That's, that's what made me wonder if that might have been the reason why Councilmember Husnick received four, four letters.
Yep. So I've, I've definitely got some calls on that, too, where people have had a change dealt and not, but like I said earlier, it's Becky and the, and the admin is, is taking everyone on that list and cross-referencing with the done list on top of what she has from opus to make sure that we are not sending out a letter to somebody who shouldn't get it, or make sure that everybody that should be getting one is getting one, so.
Okay.
Now that the city's, the city's kind of involved in this final step, it's gonna be more, more seat involvement, and the letter will have our phone number on there, too, that if they have questions to contact us as well, not just the Ferguson number only, so it'll kind of give residents a you know, an option to call us to make sure this is legit and, and you know, what the steps are. There's some people that maybe are throwing it away because of the COVID thing, and then we have a list of that as well, that people are cheering, cheering to have people come to the house. We have, you know, a handful of them that we're gonna, the city and our staff. We have, you know, a handful of them that we're gonna, the city and our staff will install them after this project is done. So we're, we're definitely, you know, comply with that as well. So all we need is for them to respond somehow and, and let us know what's going on, so.
Great, great point. Thank you.
Yep.
Dave, to follow-up question to that, so, so to the extent that council receives questions on these, who should we send them to? Is it, is it send them your, your direction, send them into, um, utility billing? Where, where do we send questions?
The number on there will be, will be Becky's number for utility billing. She has a lot easier access to pull up the OPUS account and to, to look at when someone calls, she can pull that right up. I can't, I don't have access to that, so it's easier for her, for residents to call in so she can pull up their information and, you know. Schedule appointment, or she's done a lot of that too, where people call her directly and actually technically schedule the appointment with her. Or she'll just send an email to Ferguson to set the appointment. So she would be the most helpful one, so her number, her direct dial line, you know, at, at City Hall will be on that, that mailer.
Perfect. Thank you.
Yep.
Council, we have a motion and a second on the table. Any further discussion or any further questions before we vote? Seeing none, Karen, could we have a roll call, please?
Council member Gerard?
Aye.
Council member Husnick?
Aye.
Council member Munson? Council member Beistrum?
Aye.
Mayor Bean?
Aye. And that's not working. And I'm still having sound issues. Aye. Are you hearing me now?
Yes.
Motion, motion approved. Next item on the agenda this evening is our second quarter financial report. Sandy, I believe you're walking us through this.
Yes, and hopefully you can see it on the screen. And I'm going to walk through like I did last time and kind of give some details of, to explain some of those line items that we're seeing. And I think some of this is going to solidify some of the things we've been talking about with the building permits. Um, licenses is another thing and fines and forfeitures. Um, we're seeing that revenue decreasing, um, in those areas. We had something funky going on with the miscellaneous revenue where we, and it ended up working itself at the end of the year. So that, that, um, can be ignored, but, but we do have an increase in, in, in interest revenue. Beyond what we anticipated or, or budgeted for. However, there is, so when we look at that bottom line, but again, this, this is going to look different in that next quarter. Where it's going to reflect a more definite amount here. Um, but I do anticipate because of those license permits, those building permits, those fines and forfeitures. Um, and being the economic times that we're in, um, you know, I don't anticipate that we're going to be receiving the revenues that we normally receive. So that's something that administration is going to work on, staff's going to work on to see, you know, what's really going to evolve by the end of the year. Of course, we're going to know more next quarter, but you know, should we start having those conversations? You know, of, of where we're spending and, you know, what we anticipate those revenues to come in at. You know, taxes are going to be what they're going to be. We didn't, we didn't see anything majorly go, um, in, in a wrong direction there. Um, as far as the taxes, but it's these other revenues that's, that's a concern. Fortunately, the interest revenue is coming in higher, but I don't anticipate it's going to offset some of those. Um, other revenues that aren't coming in, but hence the reason for those budgets for twenty twenty-one. Um, you know, it's, how long is that going to last is the question. But looking at the expenditures, um, you know, I, I see us being more in line with our budgets. The only thing that I really kind of, you know, take a look at is, uh, just to explain the elections, we're in election year. So we're going to have different budgets and different expenditures, so it's going to be a little bit different from the prior year. We did have some additional spending in information technology compared to the prior year, but more in line with our budgets. And of course, we had some additional expenditures too, that, um, that may have evolved from, uh, from where we're at today. But that, you know, was, you know, something that we're going to get reimbursed for. Um, legal, we, we did bring our budgets down last year compared to where it was the prior year. Um, but we evidently had more spending than what we thought, and so that's coming in a little bit higher over budgets. Um, you know, everything else, when you look through, isn't extremely different. And, and emergency management, that's where we've been booking our COVID expenses. So you're going to see that, um, increasing, but we're going to get reimbursed for that. Um, but you know, a lot of it too is more in line with where our budgets are and, and like the engineering. It's something that, um, we, we brought our budgets, our spending is more in line with where our budgets are. So looking through here, um, you know, youth services, we paid for something before we did in the prior year. Um, there's a lot of that that goes on as well. Um, senior cities, senior center, we paid a, a bill earlier than what we did in the prior year. So there's a lot of that that happens as well in those expenditures. Um, but looking at, at that aspect, it. We're, we're really kind of in line with the bottom line expenditures. Um, it's the revenue that is, is something that we have to, um, take a look at. And if there is something that we can do with expenditures to offset that, we're going to start having those conversations. Um, surface water, um, I don't see anything, you know, too drastic with that, other than the intergovernmental. Um, we're not going to be receiving that. We, we budgeted for a grant, but we're not, we didn't actually get the grant. But looking at the bottom line, I, I don't anticipate that there's going to be too many issues with, with that. We do have a little bit more interest revenue again than what we anticipated, so, so that'll help out that situation. Um, and looking at where we're at with the expenditures, the budgets were, the spending is in line more so with our budgets than what they were in the prior year. I know Dave made a lot of changes, um, in staffing and, and, and expenditures. So I, I think, um, we're in line. We did have more repairs and maintenance than in the prior years. Um, however, we had a lot less spending in the prior year. So, so looking at this, um, I'm, I'm not seeing any major, um, issues with the spending and surface management. And this is the user charges. Um, you know, it shows we're in line with what we were in the prior year, so, so we're not. You know, I think that's, you know, something that we don't have to worry about and it's in line with what we, where we should be. Um, airport, um, I, I didn't see anything major there either. There is some additional capital outlay expenditures, but that was a re, from a reimbursable grant. So you see that reimbursable grant up in the intergovernmental revenue going up, which is paying for some of those additional expenditures in the capital outlay. Otherwise, when you look down, there really isn't anything major, um, majorly different from the prior year that's of concern. And this is just a graph that we keep track of, um, the different revenue sources coming in for the airport. And, and what type of things, um, and, and when they come in. And of course, you know, they're, they're coming in at different times, but we did notice and, and looking at, at the, um, that the hangar rent. And that may be the reason why this miscellaneous revenue is down as well. The hangar rent is coming in a little bit later than what it has in the past, but, but nothing too drastically, but something we're, we're keeping an eye on. And the water fund, I think there's, you know, and this is part of the reason why I kind of want some, to shore up some things too, is. You know, because of where we're at with, uh, construction, of course, now we got the connection charges. We're getting a lot less revenue at this point in time there as well, and I'm sure that's related to where our economy is. So then our discussions I want to have with, um, staff this week to determine where we want those budgets to really end up becoming. And so, but the interest rate earnings, of course, is coming in a lot more than what, what we had. But of course, some of that has to do with the bond. And, and so, so we have to have conversations regarding those connection charges as well. And how long do we anticipate this to occur and, and where should we land within our budgets at, at next year? And so when you look at the total expenditures, again, I don't see anything too major there. I think there's, you know, they're pretty much in line with where we were in the prior year. And, and I don't anticipate there to be too many problems with that. Again, it's that revenue source that, that is, um, something to look out for. And is there anything we can do with our expenditures to sustain? Um, water fund sales, again, pretty much in line with what we thought, you know, we had that increase in twenty twenty, so we do expect that little dip up. So it's, it's pretty graphically, it's pretty much where we thought it was going to be. Sewer fund, again, the same thing kind of happening there, those connection charges. Um, I think the story is there of what's happening and, and we need to figure out and have those conversations. Where do we think we're going to be going with this? How much are we going to be off by the end of the year? And what do we have to do to sustain it? And, and how can, how long can we sustain it? And where do we have to look maybe differently to ensure that we're going to have the funding available to sustain? And the same thing with, um, their expenditures, with the exception of the bond principle. Um, we had, when we budgeted for it, we didn't have the, um, same schedule. So now the schedule is coming in a little bit higher for the interest for the bond. So, um, we have to factor that in as well and make sure that, um, we factor that in ongoing as well as in that ten-year plan. Um, now that we know where we're at and where our budgets are going to be for twenty twenty-one, now we have to, um, reflect that in that plan to, um, ensure that we have the proper information.
Sandy, can, can you remind me, you know, user charges? I mean, we're halfway through the year with this budget, user charges twenty-five point three percent collected year-to-date. Our twenty-five percent of budget collected year-to-date.
Yeah.
Similar pattern. How, what is our, kind of our cadence of those collections?
Yeah, and, and when it gets to be March, we're actually, and I, I know I should have asked Becky this before I left today. And, and, but, but it really is, we're behind that one quarter. And, and, and so our, our billing isn't, you know, is going to be happening, but we're not going to get those. Billing is going to happen before June, but we're not going to get those until the next quarter. So, so there's this delay in when we're actually billing and we're actually getting the revenue sourced in. So next quarter, you're going to see that fifty percent. And, and the following quarter, you're going to see that seventy-five percent, but then there's that cleanup come January or the end of the year. So there's always going to be that delay in when we actually receive our revenue. But I can actually get you the exact dates of the calendar of billing versus receiving the revenue.
Yeah, and I remember that, that discussion last year too, but I just couldn't quite remember what that cadence was, so.
Yeah, but there, there is just that delay in the quarter. Cause we're quarterly billing.
So from a revenue, from a revenue standpoint, that is the case for user charges, that that is just a delay. What we're seeing though.
You look at the prior year, it's the same, same, same trend.
What we're, right, what we're seeing though with the connection charges is that is a real reduction in revenue. And we're just not having those, that project volume with those connection charges that we would have had and so.
Right.
Yep.
Right.
That's a helpful distinction. Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, cause when you, when you look at it compared to the prior year, it's pretty stand, it stands out. And, and we, we, we've had it very good these last few years. And, and now, um, you know, I think the economy has pretty much brought it to us as far as, you know, not having the buildings permits like we have. And, and now the connection charges aren't going to occur. So I, I'm, I want to have a talk with staff and, and see where we need to go with this. Or, you know, is there something that needs to be explained?
Have, have we seen, because I know we had a pretty dramatic down, down, I mean, well, a straight decrease. When everything shut down in mid-March, so that March to June quarter, I, you know, things just came to a complete standstill. Have we started to see a shift? Have we started to see an uptick again in?
And, and this, this is a conversation I wanted to have with Dave, and I don't know if Dave has any, he's probably seen this new tonight too. So I don't know if he has any inkling of.
Well, what?
That's going.
What this, if you're talking about connection charges, that's directly, directly related to construction and new homes and the new apartment buildings. And those are petering off, to be quite honest with you. Permit revenue reflects that. The number of permits that we're issuing are about the same, but therefore remodeling and small jobs at the house and things like that. It's, it's the larger, it's the larger things, the, the school expansions, the number of apartment buildings, the number of homes. We're just not, we're starting to see that lessen as we go forward. So that's where the connection charges, it's directly rated to the permit charges as well. So connection charges and permits, so you, you've seen us budget for less next year for the permit charges. And have to do the same thing with the connection charges are going to also go down because we're not seeing the, the major construction items that we used to see the last couple of years.
You know, this is a great tee-up to the conversation I would expect we're probably going to have when we talk about twenty twenty-one budgets for these enterprise funds. Um, you know, when we did the rate study, we had quite the conversation, um, at the council level. Um, on what was the, um, what was the mix that we were going to use between user charges and connection charges? And I'll be interested to see an update of that. And I appreciate, we're not going to do a full rate study again, but, um, just to see an update on how that's coming through and what we might need to do for those funds. Because that weighting was a, you know, a big consideration on what we were doing with user charges.
Yeah, and some of the initial look at, at water and sewer regard and with the, when we've been going with ours in the ten-year plan. Recognizes that both those funds are in fairly decent shape, but, um. They've done a mini rate study and we'll kind of cover that when we get to the ten-year plan as well.
That's good.
Hey, and, uh, and like I said, we're going to be adjusting these budgets accordingly and get that into that ten-year plan to reflect a more accurate picture. And, and hopefully, um, come up with a plan on how we're going to deal with this. Um, and again, the, um, user charges are in line with where we thought they were going to be. We expected that little uptick in, uh, twenty twenty, which isn't much, but there is that little uptick. And, and so it's in line with where we think, and it's kind of, this kind of explains the, um, the, um. The, the timing of the payments, so you know, you're going to see it flat from February through April, and now we're getting those payments coming in. So this, um, graph is, is a good indicator of when those payments are coming in. And this is sideways, let's see, I don't know if I can do this or not. Um, but this is, and, and this is in your packet and you can view it, um, at your discretion. But this is the, the cash investments and it, and it has the, a graph just basically showing, um, market values comparing for the. They're in certain areas as well as the kinds of investments that are happening. And, and what this, um, graph does show everybody is, is how we're invest, not only how we're investing, but what we're investing. We're leaving some liquidity in our funds for, of course, those, you know, things that happen that we're not thinking of happening. But also we're pushing things later on and, and gaining more interest in the long run. Um, and as you're going to see, there's more diversification happening, um, with what we're actually investing.
Right, right-click your mouse a few times on rotate clockwise.
And where?
Rotate, right-click, rotate clockwise. You have to do it two or three times. All right, never mind.
I, I wasn't finding anything, so I was like, oh, boy. Um. I know, that ain't going to do it either. Um, but like I said, you do have this in your packet, um, and hopefully got a copy of it. Um, but it's something that I provide every quarter to kind of give you an idea of what those investments look like, what that cash looks like. And, and, um, and provide some, uh, some insight, what we're doing to invest in. And what PF, or PMA, PMA is helping us with in, in investing and diversifying versus just putting it all into CDs. We're not putting it into CDs anymore. We're using those US treasuries and those municipal securities. which is becoming more lucrative than, than going into the CDs. So, so they're doing a good job in, in investing for us and, and, and doing a comparable ability to, to do it long-term as well as to have that short-term liquidity. And that's all I have for you on the quarterly report unless there's any questions.
Thank you, Sandy. Council questions of Sandy of the quarterly report. And Sandy, could I have you stop sharing your screen just so we're able to see all participants? There we go, thank you. Council, any further questions? Otherwise, I will entertain a motion to approve the second quarter report. Council member Gerard.
It really has to do with the investments, and I think Sandy, you gave a nice update there. So is the future to continue to draw down the money markets and the CDs? I mean, we got about eight million in them now. Are those will continue to decrease and the government securities and immunities will continue to increase since they're doing so well?
And, and you know, PMA likes to diversify, of course. You know, it's, it's putting it in that right mix. As you probably hear from most investors of money, that they just want to make sure that there's not too many eggs in one basket. They want to diversify it. But it's also looking at where is the market today? And, you know, you know, at one point, maybe CDs were better than, you know, US securities and municipal securities. But what we're finding now is actually municipal securities are great. So, so it's a matter of diversifying, but also, you know, making sure that we're going to get in the biggest bang for our buck. So that you're, you're going to, you know, right now, that's kind of what you're seeing as we, before PMA came on board, we had it all in CDs and that just wasn't a, a best fit for us. It was an easy way of doing things, but it wasn't the best fit for us to be able to get the biggest bang for what we're investing in. So by, by diversifying, of course, you're not putting too many eggs in one basket, but you also want to make sure that you're making the most of what you can. And, and that's what's happening right now.
I'm very happy with the end result, don't give me a fuck.
Especially in 2020.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Or I will, if there's no other questions, I will entertain a motion to approve. I'm moved. A second. Motion and a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, Ken, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Council member Gerard.
Aye.
Council member Husnick.
Aye.
Council member Munson.
Aye.
Council member Beistrum.
Aye.
Mayor Bain.
Aye. Second quarter financial report is approved. Moving on, that is the end of our action agenda. We will move on to staff updates. Let's start with Patrick and then go to Dan this evening.
Yes, I have no report this evening. If I have, if you have questions, I'd be happy to take them.
And just move on, Dan.
Any questions for Patrick? Seeing none, we'll go to Dan and then after Dan, we'll do Chief Peterson.
Just a quick update on the council chambers audio update. That work has been scheduled for mid-September, so Tierney will be out here in a little over two weeks to get that work completed. And then I was able to get the order of all of our laptops in with IT kind of before the other cities did. So we are, those have all been ordered and should be out here soon. So got to the front of the line, which was my goal. So that's all been ordered and now it's time to get the equipment and get it dispersed. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions people have.
Perfect, any questions for Dan? Seeing none, well, Chief Peterson and then Captain Weiss.
Mayor and City, oh, Mayor and City Council members, good evening. I don't have any specific staff updates for you, but probably similar to the other department heads. I've spent the majority of my time over the past few weeks and months working on our department's budget for 2021 and discussions regarding the CARES Act and equipment needs for the police department. Do you have any questions for me?
Any questions for Chief? No, no questions, excellent. Captain Weiss, anything else to add this evening? And we'll go to Chief Newman afterwards.
No, Mayor, members of council, I have nothing further unless you have questions.
Anything for Captain Weiss this evening? Seeing none, Chief Newman, and then we will, after Chief Newman, go to Amanda. Is Pete, did Pete, no, Pete here, we'll do Pete and Amanda after Chief Newman. Chief Newman, go ahead. And Al might be on mute. Let's skip ahead, well, Pete and Amanda, any updates this evening?
Your Honor, council members, good evening. My only update is triggered by a communication that all of you received from Council for Settled Inc. About their proposal and expectation or request for further engagement with both the council and the planning commission. I wanted to just update you to know that I am engaged with their lawyer. Staff and I and Amanda are working on this. We are not expecting or requesting any special meetings outside of the ordinary and routine processing of a development application at this point. And I would encourage, if possible, patience. I'm sure you're hearing from perhaps more than one quarter on this subject. And the temptation to start talking about it or start talking about it outside of proper channels is just something that is, is natural and preferably avoided. That's, that's my only update for the evening, but I'm happy to answer questions.
Thank you for the reminder and the update. Any questions for Pete or Amanda this evening? Seeing none, let's go to Ryan the next, and we'll do Donovan after Ryan.
Mayor City Council, my big announcement, I guess, is we plan on open the roundabout at Highway 97 in Goodview this Friday or Saturday morning, depending what we got. The only thing that we all left is final striping. So we brought in, contractor brought in two pavers Saturday to finish all the paving. But we got to let the mat sit for a couple of days before we can do the final striping on that. So we plan on starting that Wednesday, pending weather, and then hopefully you can have that done by Friday to get that intersection open. So just a phenomenal job by the contractor. I mean, honestly, 60% of the time you'll get a bid and you're going to have a contractor come up with excuse after excuse and want an extension after extension. This contractor's been out there basically Monday through Saturday, the duration of the entire project. So, you know, not many can pull off what they did. So, you know, it's a local contractor just down the road. So they, they're also the contractor that did the Phase Two downtown Lakeside Memorial Parking Lots. And that was all within schedule. So, you know, they perform year after year and so things, you know, we were just fortunate to have them on this job and things have turned out very well.
Noted and much appreciated. We're going to have some very happy residents to have that detour removed. There are sections of the community that have been a bit of a speedway the last couple of weeks, so. Be very nice to have that done. Any questions for Ryan this evening? Dave, and after Dave, we will go to Sandy.
No updates tonight unless you have anything for me.
Anything for Dave this evening? All right, thank you. Sandy, anything further for council this evening?
No, I don't have anything further unless anybody has any further questions.
No further, anything further for Sandy? Nothing further. So we are going to, just confirmation, we are going to notice a budget workshop for next Monday, correct? And council, put that on a 6:30 start time. That will be an additional meeting that's probably not currently on your calendar. And I say that as much for my benefit as everybody else's. All right, Sandy, thank you, and Karen? I may have, we may have lost, did we lose Karen? Or she's off my screen.
I think we passed-
We may have lost.
I think we passed over Donovan as well.
Oh, I'm sorry, Donovan, sorry. I think we've, I think we've lost Karen, but Donovan.
Yeah, I, I just want to report that we did have a large planning commission agenda on August 14th and did, the planning commission did approve three local business expansions. I'm happy to report. And also that the Minnesota Lakes Final PewDie application is becoming for city council review on their, your next September 14th council meeting. And that's it for me, I'm happy to take any questions.
Very good. And yeah, it was an amazing agenda marathon and they did it all within curfew and even had some chit chat time afterwards. It was an impressive, impressive amount of work I've done in one evening, so well done.
Thank you.
Um, have I missed anybody? Karen, are you back with us? I don't think so. Let's move on to council updates. We'll start with council member Husnick and then go to council member Gerard.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have nothing to report except that I did attend the EDA meeting tonight, it was a workshop meeting. I know you're going to want to expand on that, so beyond that, I have nothing else, so.
Very good. Council member Gerard, and then we'll go to council member Beistrum.
Thank you. And Donovan, the planning commission did have a monster meeting on the 12th. And we are going to see expansion from some businesses. There's a, a coffee shop, which is going in right at, across from Mattson's, they're going to put a parking lot in. The veterinary hospital, South Shore, next to US Bank there, they're doing an expansion. As is Jeep dealer is going to expand and have part of their building just be Jeep sale. So it's some nice business expansion to see. And as Donovan also mentioned, their mini storage is getting off the ground also. So it was a really productive meeting and like you said, Mayor, it went quite a while, but they moved it right along.
Very good. Council member Beistrum and then council member Munson.
I'm just attended, just a quick report, just attended the Parks, Charles and Lakes Commission meeting, August 19th. And was a bit of a quick meeting. They talked a little bit about some park maintenance updates, reviewed their Q3 and Q4 work plans and actually have selected several projects to utilize some funding for to kind of wrap up the year, get done, get done this fall. A little, you know, little savings with, without all of the activity this summer. So they're anxious to move ahead with some of those pieces. We're going to be meeting again on the Fenway Athletic Agreement. We're going to try to get 2021 taken care of quickly. Our meeting is this coming Thursday and, you know, hopefully we'll be able to, I think we landed at a really good agreement this last go-round. We simplified it considerably, cleaned it up, and I'm hoping that it's a pretty simple, you know, just let's take a, a review and, and approval. And then just some citizen communication around the settled ink, some solicitation in the community again. And just mentioned Chief Peterson and Administrator Casey about potentially getting some communication out on the, the need for licenses in the community, maybe some social media communication, reminding our community members that licenses are required by solicitors. And the same, we had, I was brought to my attention, some political signs were taken down by a resident and that created a little bit of an uproar on social media. So it might be time to, we're getting into political season, might be time to remind the community where those signs can and can't go and you cannot steal them. You cannot take them down on your own, you can't do that.
Even if it's in the, even if it's in the right of way, yes. Well timed, we have a, we have a history of signs in right of way and it is always, always a good reminder. And then also a, a can, things you can and cannot do with signs that are in a right of way that you may not appreciate.
Yeah, so that's all I have.
And so begins, and so begins the season.
That's all I have.
Council member Munson.
Just a quick update, attended the Athletic Association meeting last Tuesday. They were talking about the upcoming meeting this Thursday with Fenway Advisory Committee to nail down the 2021 agreement, so looking forward to that. That's it.
Very good, thank you. Just two quick updates from me this evening. Had a meeting earlier today, a continuation of the conversations we've been having with the YMCA and the school district. They have tentatively set the Equity Innovation Center Vision Session to be September 26th, 9:00 AM to noon. That is going to be a 100% remote meeting via Zoom. If you're familiar with that process, you know that that is quite a change for that group to make that from a typically very collaborative in-person meeting with lots of breakout discussions and lots of contacts to virtually a virtual Zoom meeting. So they are working through what that might look like, but it is, I feel important to that and I'm happy that they are continuing to move on with that session. The September 26th session will be the vision session and then that will be followed up with four sessions in October. And those are also scheduled for half-day sessions. And that kind of sets the platform for what's next, so it's nice to see that work continue. Also, tonight, we had our second meeting of the Downtown Committee. We reviewed, reviewed the slot analysis that had previously been prepared. We talked about how we might best use the grant dollars that we have from the county on the Downtown Planner resource that has been funded and some discussion on what that looks like. Dan is working on some quotes and getting some more information available for that group to evaluate. Also, we, we heard a report from the Downtown Beautification Group who continues to just be incredibly engaged and do great work. And so thank you to them for all of their efforts. And it's good, good to have their voices as part of that process. So again, that Downtown Beautific, or that Downtown Initiative Group is meeting that fourth Monday of the month. Second Monday of the month is a regularly scheduled EDA meeting and that is how we will sequence. So that group will meet again fourth Monday in September. That is all I have by way of updates. Again, a quick reminder for next Monday at 6:30 for a workshop session. And again, if you have others, more specific questions around the budget that you want staff to address or you want, as you're having conversations with the community, happy to include that content as we wrap up discussion on the general fund and then transition discussion to some of the enterprise funds. Again, a reminder, I made a mention at the beginning of this, I, I think during the work, the budget workshop, there was a request from a resident that we got the, those budget materials posted online. So if we could, typically we've had kind of a finance page that's had the home of all of that information. And as we add in the enterprise funds, it's a good kind of one-stop shop as those budget conversations evolve. So it's good we've got residents that are engaged and wanting to see that information. That's all I have tonight. And with nothing further on our agenda, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, and Karen, could we have a roll call, please? I think you might be on mute.
Council member Gerard.
Aye.
Council member Husnick.
Aye.
Council member Munson.
Aye.
Council member Beistrum.
Aye.
Mayor Bain.
Aye, and we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody, good night.
All right, have a good week.
Aye.